Okay, Sean, why don't you just go ahead and get started?
Okay, well, thank you, everybody for joining me for the TUCO Common School District Regular Board Meeting, dated January 11th, 2021. I would like to call this meeting to order if all of you could join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so if anybody has had the time to look at the minutes for the regular board meeting on December 14th and also the special board meeting on December 21st. There are no questions if we could have an approval for those minutes. I second that. We, okay. All right, well, moving right along, Katie, if we could have the treasurer's report.
Sure, good evening, I'd like to present the treasurer's report for the month of December 2020. If you could please turn to page two. Our beginning balance for the month of December was $5,743,262.97. Our total receipts for the month included $1,760,835.04. Our total disbursements for the month was $2,486,944.04, making our end balance for December 2020 $5,017,153.97. If you could please turn to page three. On your close summary, you'll see that we have received $1.3 million in property taxes. We do see a consistency in this, we have received already two payments in the month of January. And that concludes my treasure report for the month of December 2020.
Thank you, Katie, are there any questions? No, if not, could I have a resolution to approve those minutes?
Bob's made a motion to approve it.
Can you hear Mr. Gomartyn?
I second that.
Thank you.
Alrighty, and could we, any correspondence?
I do not have any correspondence, Laurie, did you get anything else today? Or yesterday?
No? No?
No emails.
Okay, then could we have the superintendent's report, please, Len?
You can, our enrollment update is we're up a couple of students this month. We had, let me pull it up on the computer very quickly. We had one in the elementary and we have one on homeschooling that has been added. There are also a couple that are on here through HB Ward, but we're going to discuss those at a later date, that has to do with who's at Southampton Half Day and who goes to Bosie's Half Day, so we'll talk about that another time. But we're up a couple of students, so we're up to, on here it shows 503 instead of.
Okay.
The second part of my report is the renovation of the house on Sabonic. We've yet to get another estimate for the plumbing. We want that estimate before we bring you solid numbers, but we are looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of requesting a resolution to put aside $300,000 from this year's budget to $350,000 from this year's budget to, as a maximum allowance for doing all of the repairs necessary, which would include the roof, it would include the interior, as you know, right now there's nothing on the inside other than the bare two by four walls. It would include all of the heating, the air conditioning, the electric, the insulation, the sheet rock, the walls, the paint, from, everything would be redone and the windows in the house. So I would like to discuss the possibility of a resolution at our next meeting, because the longer we wait to do this, the longer it'll take to get the things through the state in order to get started. So I don't want to keep pushing it off and keep pushing it off. I'd like to have that discussion at the next meeting to do a resolution and hopefully by then we'll have the final number for a plumber.
Okay.
Okay. And I'd also like to share that we are going to begin negotiations with the Southampton contract later this week. As we discussed, the contract for our school attending Southampton School solely is now, it comes to an end of this year, so we're beginning negotiations to hopefully be able to create a new contract to extend what we've been doing with Southampton. Any thoughts or questions on that?
Not for me.
We will be going into exec at the end of this to discuss, you know, things that should be discussed in exec. And finally, the budget planning. Mr. Fraser and I have met with Mrs. Sicari and Mrs. Buckley to go over their budgets. We've gone over the budgets of the requests from technology and everywhere else. And in doing so, it is a very preliminary budget and as always, the first numbers I give you are going to be much higher than what the reality will be. But as we looked at them, we currently have a budget to budget increase with all of the requests at 4.84%. And using that, it creates a estimated or projected tax levy increase of 4.0%. I know you'll be asking, how is that, you know, where do we get that number? Much of that number comes from the operation of plants for COVID-19 supplies. We needed a lot of COVID-19 supplies this year that we did not fully budget for, we needed a lot more than we thought we would. Sub custodians are impacted because we need more people to keep the building clean. We needed monitors in the classrooms because the classrooms, we had no idea that we would have these new rules of six feet and not as many kids in the classroom as we're used to. So we had to spread out classrooms, which means we needed more supervision and more monitors to be able to do that. We're taking temperatures in the morning, we're delivering meals to classrooms, so it took a lot more monitors to be able to do the things that we're doing. Tuition costs will of course go up, state aid, computer hardware that we'll be getting some more tablets, contract transportation, we have monitors on the buses as well, that's not something we've had in the past, but in order to ensure that we took the temperatures of all students before they arrived at our school and before they got on a bus to contaminate other students on the bus, we have monitors riding each of the buses to take the temperature of the students at the bus stops. That combined with the salary increases that exist, it all equates to that approximate amount of a 4% levy increase. Again, this is very preliminary. We will all be working together to do what we can to make this as low as we can. I have promised you over the last couple of meetings that we are going to do everything we can to get this as close to zero. But with all of these things with COVID and those things still existing, what we're hearing now is this could possibly extend much further than this year with how schools are running. So even though there is a vaccine and we're all hopeful and thankful that the vaccine is here, we have to make sure that we have the contingencies in our budget to continue to practice the safety things that we've been doing for our faculty and for our students. So that part right now has to remain in the budget. So that's where we're at right now and at our next meeting, we will of course go over in more detail each and every one of the categories and start talking about all of that and whittling it down together. What we haven't been able to do from the administrative perspective, we will all be looking at together and having those discussions and start whittling down to where we feel is an appropriate spot. Again, making sure everyone is safe and that we have all the things that we need for our students in the building.
Have you gotten any idea, you know, I thought today was the day that in New York State, January 11th, that, you know, the Class 1B, where teachers and staff or employees of the school could begin getting vaccinated. Have you gotten any color on that as far as how that's going to happen or where or when?
Well, there have been several different rumors that shot around. There were websites to register that were put around that didn't work, that people kept trying and trying and trying and they didn't open. The newest one that we have from New York State does get you to a point where it says whether or not you're eligible. That has been shared by our TTA this evening, just before this meeting, actually, I was talking with them. And that has been shared through the TTA with all of our teachers. I have been trying that website and my wife is a teacher, so she's been trying that website for a couple of hours. We've gotten to the point that it allows you, it tells you that yes, you're eligible, but then it's sent, it shows you places where you can register. You click on one of them, for us, Jones Beach is the closest one. And you can register and get to where it shows you Jones Beach and it says pick a date, but when you click on the date where it says it's available, it doesn't let you do anything else after that, it doesn't actually register you.
Okay.
The sites are very limited, things are not working as nicely as we had hoped. And we're hopeful that we'll hear some more on that and things will be more readily available for our teachers soon.
Okay, all right, thank you, Len. Any questions from anybody about superintendent's report?
Len, has there been any indication from the state as to funding for the next year?
I can tell you that we received a cut from last year's funding of 20% and from this year's funding of 20%. And Mr. Fraser, I believe you might know a little more about the funding for next year, is that also a 20% reduction? Yeah, unmute yourself, Mr. Fraser.
Just click it once, you double. Now you're good.
There you go.
Did I miss something?
Yes, they asked about state funding and I said last year's state funding had been cut 20%. This year's state funding is going to be cut 20%. And looking forward into next year's budgeting, we are looking at 20% again, is that correct?
Hi, looks like he's frozen again.
He's stunned by the question.
He gets stunned by the 20%, we're all actually stunned by the 20%.
Okay, all right, we'll get back to that when Carl comes back in.
I asked the question.
Yeah. Well, we need, Carl, are you there? Are you back, all right?
Yes, I don't know what's going on.
Did you hear any of that?
I just asked whether there was any information from the state government in terms of funding for the next year, whether we're going down 20%? Whether there's any hope that the federal government will kick in some money?
No, we haven't heard anything for next year yet. But certainly we've been impacted this year by the 20% reduction in our state aid.
And in our budget, as we budgeted towards next year, we continued that 20% reduction, did we not?
Yes.
Thank you.
That includes the 4% or 4.5% increase?
Yeah. Yes, that increase of 4% in the tax levy is inclusive of the 20% tax cut that, or the funding cut.
So any help we get from the federal government would decrease that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, if not, then we'll move along to the business officials' report, Carl, please.
Okay, I am presenting Mitch Sobczek's report, his news and notes.
Can I just hold you off for one second, Carl? Because we had the principal's report before you.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
I thought I missed that, but my frozen state.
Sorry, could we have the principal's report? Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. It's really a quick statement, we're just getting back from our holiday break, so I just want to do a shout out to our teachers and students for doing an amazing job on being fully remote this past Friday. And unfortunately, you know, this week we will be fully remote as well, but they've done an amazing job and everyone has been being part of the Google Meet and instruction. And I can't thank the teachers enough for really preparing our students for instruction on, for the circumstances that we're in this week. So thank you to all the teachers and students who have just really persevered through this whole thing and they're really doing amazing job. So I just want to do a shout out to both our teachers and students and keep up the good work as we move forward this week in full remote instruction. So other than that, I'm good.
All right, thank you, all right, any questions? No, okay. All right, so now if we could have the business officials' report, Carl.
Okay. Mitch's news and notes. December 10th, West Star Construction completed the capital project of rebuilding the cupola using all Versatec's PVC material. That total cost was $16,328. On December 11th, Intralogic Solutions installed a new intercom system in the main office for the main entrance doors, which is tied into the system at the middle school lobby. This was a capital project that totaled $5,264. On December 17th, snow day, the custodial crew arrived at 12 noon and worked until 2:30 PM to clear the walkways. Also on December 17th, Best Modular cleared all driveways and parking lots. They had cleared McGee Street and the Snow Shelf. Salted and sanded, total cost of that work was $1,0175. On December 22nd, all HVAC filters were changed in the middle school using Murph 13 filters. And on January 8th, all grade school filters were also changed. On December 28th, Nicer Insurance inspected the school building and buildings and grounds. And the report is to follow. On December 28th, also Premier Pest Control treated the entire building while the school was closed. On December 28th, a lot was done on December 28th. J.C. Broderick Associates forwarded the lab reports for the recent lead tests on all the school's plumbing fixtures. Four units were found to have high levels above 15 ppb. These fixtures were put out of service and new fixtures ordered. Once installed, we will retest the fixtures. On January 9th, on a Saturday, Harrington Plumbing installed the new fixtures. J.C. Broderick will retest the end, at the end of the week. All fixtures will remain out of service until we receive the test results. December 29th, J.C. Broderick performed annual AHRRA triannual inspection of the school building. And on December 30th, the fire inspected, the fire department inspected and tagged all fire extinguishers. The total cost was $245.90. And that's Mitch's report. Any questions?
What were the four fixtures, do we know?
Yes. The areas were the former nurse's office where Doreen currently sits and also rooms 118 and 114. 118 was the family and consumer science room, which is not being used currently, and room 114 bathroom.
Just to be clear, none of those, none of those sinks are used for drinking or for cooking food. So it wasn't, luckily, it wasn't any of those. And it appears that it's the fixture itself, the faucet, that may be producing this. So we've changed all the faucets, it's happened before where it comes from the faucets and we have to change them.
Right, okay. All right, any other questions? All right.
How the.
Residency report?
Residency report. It's, I should say, it's business as usual. Mr. Locata has been busy following up on proofs. We had a few new entrants between last month and this month and he's been following up on proofs, there's still, generally speaking, he requests there are three proofs that are needed when someone registers. He has not been able to receive the number of proofs that he's waiting for and he's following up on that. So he's been writing letters, he's also been visiting homes and been very, very busy in terms of getting things done. And that's the residency report.
Any questions on the residency report?
I see on the residency report, the total removes of 26 students, is that correct?
I missed the part of your question.
On the residence report, there's total removed 26, is that correct you said?
That's correct.
Yeah, that was always reported.
Yes.
And we have 72 students entered?
I believe those numbers are for the year.
For the year, yeah, it's total for the year.
From July 1. So yeah, we've had many more come into the district than have left this year.
If nothing else, the Global Monticello Fuel Agreement?
Oh, yes, if you recall, with our new contract with Montag Bus, one of the clauses in the agreement was that we will purchase fuel and at the state contract rate. And because we are a school district, we don't pay taxes on the fuel. So any costs related to fuel purchase for our own buses that transports our students will be charged back to Montag Bus. Or in fact, when we receive a bill, our monthly bill from Montag, we will deduct the fuel costs from those bills. So Montag, both ourselves and Montag gains from this experience in terms of us purchasing the fuel rather than they purchase it. So the company, Global Monticello, we have to approve that company because we are receiving, we are doing business with them directly and that's the reason why this is on the board agenda for approval, but we are not, there's no cost to us because the fuel is charged back to Montag Bus.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Len, do you mind dealing with the item number nine, the policies?
Sure, again, these are second readings of the policies and the policies themselves have changed very slightly. It's really just some wording differences in each of them except for pandemic planning. Those are all the new rules that we have to live by under pandemic planning and online distance and remote learning. Equity and inclusive, and inclusivity and diversity in education is something that we've been talking about for probably a year and a half to two years and that is a brand new policy, ensuring that we are equitable, inclusive and diverse in our educating practices and that we teach our students and teachers what that means as well as become part of inclusive and diversity job fairs and things of that nature.
Thank you.
In the budget, not the budget, sorry, the board reading December 14th?
Yes.
That was our first reading?
These are in the first reading and the December 14th meeting, yes.
Okay. Any major changes from then?
No, those are all the same as you read on the 14th, it's the same ones.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if nothing else, any new business?
Yeah, Sean, I have something on the new business.
Okay.
This coming Sunday, 20, the 17th of January, is Mr. John Holden's 100th birthday. He's a member of American Legion. He's been coming to Tupperhill School for many, many years, giving out the American Legion Award to the boy and girl at eighth grade graduation. Normally, when someone turns 100, as you've noticed on television, there've been drive-bys to home by friends. Well, we can't do that for Mr. Holden because a few months ago, he and his wife were taken to an assisted living place in Lake Rock, Oklahoma. So Judge Barbara Wilson came to me last week, which is one of her neighbors here on Elm Street, and said, why don't we collect birthday cards to send to Mr. Holden for his 100th birthday? And I thought that was a great idea. She asked me to use my store as the depot to drop the cards off and his son Lester will take them up to him on the 17th, on Sunday. What I did was I went to Arlette and to Barbara Sanders, our art teacher at the Lent. I talked about having our students make him cards for his 100th birthday. That was our plan. But now I don't know where we're going, since where we moved. Any thoughts on that, Arlette, what's happening?
Yeah, no, excitingly, we're still working on the cards. We're doing them digitally. So for the younger students, it may not be something where they can actually make a card because digitally it's a little more complicated for them. But certainly for the students that can do it digitally, which is basically grades three and up, they're definitely still making cards for him. I also spoke to Kitty from the Southampton Press and I shared some pictures of some of our pre-K students that are still making cards at home. So we're trying to pull together at least the younger grades for them to be able to make those cards for him. We shared, I shared with Kitty the fact that he was always there with you on Flag Day, always teaching the students about the pledge and the importance of the flags and also attending our graduation during the American Legion Awards. So we're still working on it and we still plan on being able to supply him with some really warm happy birthday cards by this Thursday or Friday. So we're still working on that, it's just going to be more digital than, you know, handwritten for the younger kids, so.
That's great, thanks a lot, I really appreciate you picking up the ball and running with it. And I have been getting people coming into my pharmacy, dropping off cards in the great big box. We have a big box here for them to put them in. And I even have customers that see the box there and they've gone out, bought cards and came back the same day with cards. So it's going along well, we're trying to get at least 100 cards for his 100th birthday. And since our, as Len has said, we're coming up on our 100th day of school, so that's going to be our 100th day project to provide 100 cards for Mr. Holden.
Absolutely, and I don't think we're having trouble meeting that.
And also I gave the notice to WNG Radio and they've been advertising it in different parts of the day. So we'll see between now and Friday how it goes. Thank you all for helping.
My pleasure.
All right, any other new business?
No, sir.
All right, any old business?
No, sir.
All right, I don't believe we have a PTO's report. I know we don't have a TUCO Educational Foundation report unless, Arlette, we don't have a PTO report that anybody shared with you, right?
No, I did speak with them this evening, there's nothing to report.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Any public commentary or any questions that had come in, Laurie?
No, nothing, actually. I'm looking right now. Yep.
Okay. All right. So, well, then I will move on to the resolutions and there are several. One, finance about the Global Monticello Group. An administrative one, a couple of appointments. And the policy for the TUCO Common School District Policies. And then six one for the CSE Recommendations. Are there any questions on any of these resolutions?
I have none.
Okay. Tim, you good?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, then could I have a resolution from somebody to pass items one through six?
I'll make a motion that the board trustees adopt resolutions numbers one through six.
Second.
Unanimous. Okay. Well, I think that is all for our regular board meeting. So if, could we have a resolution to close the regular board session at eight oh eight? Or can I, can I make that motion?
You can make it.
All right, let me make it. I'll make a resolution to close the regular board meeting at eight oh six and go into executive session to discuss contractual matters.
Second.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Good night. Night.
Good night, Arlette. Good night, Doreen.